Basically explains the sewer project, how it was funded. When it started and how it was funded. And so just to kind of for everybody to hear. Project for the sewer department was approved at the February. Once we move forward, the town acquires interim financing. We go out to bid for interim financing. Banks give us their, we tell them what the terms are. We're going to need to borrow some interim financing for a period of time. What's your best interest rate and we award a contract or the. The financing services that we look for to the best, the bank that has the best terms. And so that ended up being First National Bank out of coastal Maine, our harbor area. That was all done with bond counsel helping us out. So what happens with these rural development sewer projects? Or it's the same thing with Dawn and for instance with drinking water projects when they're funded by rural development. We first have to get the interim financing for the full amount of what the loan is going to be in this case six point one, six million, one hundred and five thousand dollars. As a project is progressing, we go through phases and there's pay requisitions that come in. We pay for the project in installments to the contractors and vendors that are doing work and we pay that from interim financing. When we get to the point that interim financing becomes depleted, you know, we're getting close to being done with the interim financing. In other words, we spent about an equal amount as what we have in interim financing. We transition to the loan with rural development that's approved. And so what you have in front of you is the resolution. That it's basically the promissory note of the town signed by the towns officials, if you will. And so it's a, it's a project already approved at town meeting. We're moving forward. Rural development would have never committed to this project if we didn't have the commitment by the townspeople, which has already been taken care of. At this point in time, we're just moving forward from the interim financing stage. Getting into the loan, getting the loan committed and then moving into the grant phase of the project. So we spend all of our borrowing money first and then USD throws their one point eight nine five million of the, of their funds. Their commitment to the project at the tail end of the, of the project, if you will. So you have the, the resolution of United States of America, state of Maine, municipality, the town of Matawaska, Maine. Two thousand and twenty obligation bond for six million, one hundred, five thousand dollars at a rate of one point three seven, five percent. If you can recall, the authorization at town meeting was for terms for that amount of money, not to exceed an interest rate of two percent. Luckily, you know, interest rates have fallen quite a bit. Just from pre-April, we dropped down to one point three seven five percent. And that saves us about twenty two thousand dollars a year with the finance charge, which is significant. So with that being said, you have in front of you the amortization schedule, what the payments look like. Last payment due is April twenty three, two thousand and forty eight. The payment, the average payment, the first one's going to be two hundred and sixty four thousand, one hundred and seventy one dollars and fifty two cents per year. And we're going to be paying for that until twenty thousand, uh, two thousand and forty eight.
Twenty eight year loan.
Twenty eight year loan. You can see you have my certificate of indebtedness for the town that we provided, which is. The town has by statute, by state law, all towns have a borrowing limit. And there's two, there's two levels of borrowing limit, if you will. There's the town operations in it of itself, meaning just the town budget. Which is seven and a half percent of state valuation. So we use last year's valuation times seven point five percent. And that gives us the town debt limit of twenty five million, one hundred and forty three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. There is also what's called the aggregate debt limit of the town where the school debt and sewer debt. Included with the town debt cannot exceed more than fifteen percent of state valuation. And that number you'll see down below, the aggregate debt limit of the town slash school slash sewer department is fifty million, two hundred and eighty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. On your next page of financial statement for the town, you'll see what our total current indebtedness is. Bonds outstanding and unpaid. That means that's what we have out for loans as of April sixteen, two thousand and twenty. Of eight million, three hundred and forty one thousand dollars, twenty eight million, three hundred and forty one thousand, twenty five dollars and seventy one cents. And when you include the sewer loan of six point one oh five, that gives us indebtedness of fourteen million, four hundred and forty six thousand, twenty five dollars and seventy one cents. Any questions? On that.
Any question from any board member?
So I guess the only question I have is the project itself is. Close to completion, is that what you're saying? And. But speak a little bit about the project itself and who's the engineer and how far we're into it.
So right now we're projecting substantial completion in June. The engineer on the project is watered in current. The contractors on the job for the sewer plant is Apex Incorporated. And they have some various subcontractors working for them. And then on the projects that we had in town, meaning like the in-ground work. Pipes being replaced, McGillan was the low bidder on that. And they ended up subcontracting a lot of that work to Ed Pelletier, our local contractor. So we are currently, we still have a few small off-street sewer projects going on right now. On North Fifth Ave, with Seventh Ave, we just finished North Thirteenth Ave. I think that's what we have left for groundwork to do. And then we still have work going on at the plant. They're finishing up the upgrades. That's where the bulk of the work remains. So the project basically went on from a lot of sewer line replacement work, old leaky sewer lines that had to be replaced. They were taken in water. Sections that had been camouflaged and surveyed and found to be in need of repair and, and those projects. Started from twenty fifth Ave over by the Frenchville Town Line all the way to North Third. Some backstreet work on the south side of Main Street, a little bit of work on the north side of Main Street, behind the Main Street buildings. A section of sewer line in St. David, we replaced some, we upgraded a pump station in St. David. And then an enormous amount of work at the sewer plant.
So all of this work is costing us six million, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, we also did get a, another grant from the state of Maine. And we had to borrow, we went to town meeting on June seventeen, oh, excuse me, June twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen. And when we were going through the project, the engineers. Found some other work that we thought would be worthy potential of consideration. And they applied for funding in the states, main DEP, CW, SRF, Clear Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. And the way that project works, every year or every other year that that project. On CW, SRF, or in Dawn's case, Drinking Water Program is funded by the state of Maine and is funded by bonds. You go to referendum and you'll see those every now and then, shall the voters of the state prove drinking water and clean water programs? And so we put in for, we put an application in for funding and grant. We ended up getting a million dollar grant from Maine DEP and our share of a one point. Six nine five million dollar project was six hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. So that, that's part of this project as well.
So along, along with this loan that we're making here of six point two one eight. There's also money from the grants that was added. So this is not the total cost of the project.
No.
It's point two one eight.
Right. So the, the grant port of it, Dave, is basically one point eight nine five and another six hundred and ninety five thousand from state and federal grant work.
And if you add those three figures together, that would be the total cost.
Correct.
Of this project. Is that right?
Correct.
Plus interest.
Well, yeah, the interest is paid for over time.
The top cost, then you, you have to think about the interest too.
Right, right. And the interest is going to be somewhere north of one point two million by the time it's paid off.
Yeah.
And what threw me off is you had a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for interest, but that's for, only for the bridge loan, right?
Talking about the interim.
Yeah, the interim financing charge is, is a hundred, roughly a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That, that's paid for from the grant. USD grants paying for that, RD.
So part of the grant money you have is going to be paying off that interest.
Correct.
Okay.
One million, what, sorry, one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and five cents. These charges is going to be paid for by a rural development grant.
Yep. So this has all been accepted at town level. It's pretty straightforward. I think the interest rate is a lot better than we had anticipated. So this is really just a formality here tonight to just review this and then to give you the final okay. Is that what this is?
Yes, David, that's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
So Gary, if I can ask now, as far as the, the project itself, I mean, are we ninety percent complete? And, and how much of the funding do we, have we spent at this point?
So right now, I mean, that's it, I'm going to estimate, but right now we're probably, we're transferring our, to our interim financing. So we've got six point, roughly two million dollars spent. That's why we're transitioning to the RD funding out of interim financing. And there's DEP monies that have gone into it already, but we still have probably a couple million dollars left of work left to be done and that's going to be. Done by June. Keep in mind that we, we do pay recs every, every week or so, every couple of weeks. And so there's going to be, there's already work done that we haven't been built for. And we duly do a couple of pay recs a month to pay all of our contractors and vendors. All said and done, I anticipate that substantial completion is going to occur in June. As any large project, there's going to be a punch list likely and things that loose ends that are going to have to be tied up. But for the most part, the project will be complete. Bless some minor housekeeping things and some administrative stuff that we're going to, that's probably going to trail into, you know, by our August, I would expect.
So at this time, you're fairly sure that we're not going to be hit with extras?
No, we, we, we went into these projects and we, we were, we were clear to say that we're not going above and beyond. What is authorized by the townspeople to borrow, to spend. And so the engineers know that, they've been working under that. There are contingency monies. And so we always operate, as we're moving through the projects, we are being updated of where we are. Like the administrators, like Dawn, Dawn was part of that on the water side. Because they had a, they had a project that was kind of in sync with ours, a water, a drinking water project. And so we oftentimes had the same construction meetings and pay rec meetings, if you will. So no, we are not going to spend more money than, than. What's approved. And with the grants, the way that the grants work, you, you don't want to leave the grants on the table, you know, we're going to end up spending every dime. Because now we're into the grant phase of the project and if we don't spend the grant monies, then we're going to lose them at this point. Because we've already spent our, our obligation, our loan, if you will, part of the project.
Doug, does that answer your question?
Yep, it does. But I do, I have another, you know, just, just so I understand, how, how does the repayment plan come about? I mean, who, who designs that repayment plan and, and, and the, and the monthly payments? Is that, is that done by the state or do we, do we have any word as far as how that gets calculated?
That, that's all done by RD, rural development. And so the way, the way that these projects are funded. In respect to how much, they basically come in and they, they'll come into a town. Let's say for instance, Matawaska, RD will come in and there's going to be some study work done. They're going to look at the systems. Most of the time the systems are having issues, they've aged, there, there's some work that needs to get done. Upgrades, replacement of pipes and whatnot. So RD will come in, working with the engineers and they'll look at. The amount of debt service that is already incurred by the sewer department. They look at sewer rates, the amount of users. And I don't, I can't tell you, I don't know specifically how they, they calculate it, but they, with that. And other factors determine how much grant they're going to put into this and what the payback is going to be in terms of months. Dawn, and you've had experience with these before. Can you maybe offer a little something on that?
It's, it all depends on the availability of funds and how you. You've got the income, you know, community income levels. If you fall under a certain amount of, on the average household income, then you can qualify for a little bit more. But there is formulas that they use. RD, I'm not too familiar with. They do things just a little bit different, like as you said. But at the end of the day, they provided a package that fit what they wanted to give. And then you've got the other funding that came in from other sources. So that's basically how all of this got put together.
I, I do want to add one thing to go back on the C, on the DEP, a portion of the project. I I do wanna add one thing to go back on the C on the D E P, a portion of the project, uh, the the C W S R F uh project. When towns are invited to apply for those funds or town sewer departments or water, you know, if it's a clear, if it's a clearing, clean water project. Uh, towns are invited to apply for those funds. And so naturally, obviously, there's going to be a number of applications that are gonna go in and they get scored uh by whomever, a D E P, and and twenty eighteen, Madawaska's application out of I think thirty or so came in at second as a should, having should have been funded. Uh, so we ranked up pretty high and we got the most amount of grant that D E P would ever give for a clear uh
So how does that, how does that ranking work? I mean, how would we qualify for that kind of of rating?
You know, it all depends, again, it depends on on sewer debt, depends on the number of users, there's there's, you know, where the town is uh the sewer department is financially, uh, I don't know all of those factors, Doug. Quite frankly, they uh, those are internal things that D E P has, not privy to that.
But they also, they they also take into consideration, are you addressing a problem in your community? In this case, the C S O's, uh, the the planet self needed upgrades to stay in compliance. And so this was all part of a process that gave, the more points you received is because you probably had a more uh, a a need to get stuff done uh using their money.
So so what concerns me right now i- is that, you know, um, Gary was establishing um what kind of indebtedness the town can can actually handle? And and in looking and 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 understanding these figures, we're we're coming in at roughly seventeen percent where where our cap is at twenty five percent, is that, is that correct, Gary? Am I correct in in establishing that? And and that gives us like a seven percent leeway and we're talking about a loan here for twenty eight years? I mean, uh
So Doug, to get back to your point, let me find my certificate of indebtedness here for you. You gotta keep in mind that our certificate of indebtedness, uh, like I said earlier, statutorily, the state law says that we, the town can incur just the town operations, not not the sewer, not the school.
Okay, so this is separate?
Correct, can incur seven and a half percent. Our debt limit is seven and a half percent of state valuation, last year's state valuation. But when the aggregate for the sewer, it's not inclusive of sewer and and uh school budget, uh, school debt. But the aggregate for the three, the sewer systems, sanitary systems, school and town is fifteen percent. And that number is fifty million, uh, I can't find my
Fifty million, two eighty seven, five hundred.
Yeah.
And that's school, sewer, and what was the other one?
School, sewer and the town.
The town.
Town itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and the debt limit for the town uh is at twenty five million max uh uh based on uh, uh, last year's numbers from the state.
Correct.
The so, uh, the total indebtedness, which includes that project, will be fourteen million, a little over fourteen million. Any other questions?
And that fourteen million, Doug, that's that's town. That's thi- thi- this fourteen million uh number here on the bottom on this financial statement is the bottom line number of the certificate of indebtedness and that includes the sewer.
Yeah, I I saw that.
Town and school.
Correct.
Lori, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I had dug into this quite a bit this afternoon and uh, I'm I'm good.
Yeah, okay, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution and uh of of this uh going forward, this finishing off this loan and turning the interim loan into a a bond.
Also moved.
Oh, but Doug, is there a second?
No second.
David, any more discussions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, uh, I believe Gary wants us tomorrow, uh, because of the date of what this is all dated, is that we need to go in and sign um the uh as a uh the majority of the municipal officers, so they can send this to uh the attorney to get this all finished up.
I have just, I have just a couple of documents uh for you to sign, when is the resolution and when is your uh it's just a, it's just certificate of incumbency, basically, you're signing that you're actually selecting, so um, just a few, just a couple of signatures from from you guys tomorrow would be great.
Is that, are those ready to go? Are those uh?
I have them ready to go.
The paperwork ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. All right, all, uh, we were all in favor? Good. I think we've uh, we've all said yes. We gotta figure out what my paperwork is here, right here, okay. All right, oh. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Article Two. To update the board of ta- uh of the town of Madawaska slash Saint John Valley Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Madawaska Business Boost Program and consider U-DAG reappropriation to the program. So uh, is Keith gonna walk us through this? Uh, you and Gary, uh, Keith and Gary, I mean?
I'm gonna, Keith's gonna, Keith's ready to to address you guys and and take your questions.
Ready to listen.
Uh, yeah, I mean, um, speaking on behalf of Sharon as well, uh, who's not on the call, but um, it was an enormous success. Uh, in less than two hours, we sold out completely. Um, and uh, and we really, we really did help a lot of small businesses, it was really spread out across the the board. I don't have exact numbers with me, but um, it was an incredible program. Uh, we still have a ton of people like waiting in queue right now, um, that that didn't get a gift certificate. So, I mean, with the popularity of it, uh, man, it'd be great to throw some more funds into that. Help some of the businesses and also help people in the community.
You have a plan or an idea of what you want, you'd like to see?
Um, well, I mean, I think, like I said, we, when we knew we were gonna sell out, we um, we started uh timestamping, I mean, ob- obviously, any emails that came in were time stamped and we were time stamping as many phone calls as we could take. Um, so ideally, if there'd be any money appropriated, we would sort of take off where we left off. Um, and and handle uh in order, uh, the people that are waiting in line, so to speak. Um, and be able to just, that would be the most fair way in my perspective. So, yeah, I mean, a- again, I don't, I don't have a, I know we appropriated ten thousand originally. Um, I mean, we, we have enough. Uh, I believe we have enough people waiting in line that we could probably appropriate another twenty thousand and and still probably not touch everybody, that's how popular this program was.
Well, Gary, do you wanna talk about the U-DAG program, uh, financially, where we are on that, to see if there's possibilities to go back to that?
Okay, so just to kinda add a little bit to Keith's thing, I think we, our estimate right now is that we have about five hundred and seventy, six hundred certificates that people are waiting to find out if they can get, you know, if they can be uh funded or not. Uh, if we were to do six hundred certificates, uh, half of the cost of that would be ours and that would be fifteen thousand dollars for for uh six hundred certificates. Um, our U-DAG program had about ninety five thousand dollar balance, okay? Uh, we did a couple of uh stimulus programs, we did this program here, the boost. And we also did the microloan uh program. Um, and for those who were listening to this, this meeting, uh, the microloan program was approved by this board. Provides up to forty one thousand dollar microloans, one limit per person, per business, uh, free of interest. Um, no payments for six months and then uh after six months, you pay it back over a twelve month period, essentially an eighteen month loan. Um, no interest with a six month moratorium on payments. And so, uh, we have one loan that's been approved and already funded, we did that, uh, we took an application late last week. Uh, and we uh, it was approved, they qualified and we did uh we did process that for payment and uh that business has the funds in their hands right now. Um, and we have another application that went out today, uh, yesterday, I believe. Um, so we did advertise the microloan program and I think our limit, our, we have a limit on an application period, which is ninety days from the start of it. So, you know, we are sort of committed to putting out forty microloans, I don't know if we're gonna hit that. Uh, but let's just say that forty microloans uh takes forty grand off the ninety five thousand dollar balance in our U-DAG, right? Um, and I'm just gonna do some math, cause I didn't have it right in front of me here, but
Fifty one thousand, uh, from fifty one thousand five hundred uh minus whatever you currently had in your U-DAG of ninety some odd thousand, leaves you what, forty some odd thousand?
So we have roughly forty three thousand five hundred dollars uh left in our U-DAG program to do additional stimulus right now. Uh, making the assumption that we are going to distribute forty thousand dollars worth of microloans.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Are you making any recommendation to this board?
Well, I think that, you know, we rounded up, we have an account of about five hundred and seventy certificates that are on reserve, if you will. Um, you know, to to round that up to six hundred. Um, with our share, that would be fifteen thousand, I think, uh, it's like to be able to give the chamber a little more admin money to take care of that too, uh, they working incredibly hard um to uh to do this, uh, they did a good job, there was some bumps in the road, but uh, it was uh, it was incredible. And Keith and I were down there helping out, taking calls, uh, I went down there for a while and Doug came in, see how things were going and it was pretty pretty exciting and crazy, uh, to see the call volume and the email.
Pretty, pretty intense is more the word.
But it was exciting and Keith, I want you to speak to a little bit about uh where you see, generally speaking, the money went. So as far as distribution?
Yeah, I I mean, I was, I was pleasantly surprised, um, as to how spread out it was, it wasn't I mean, obviously, there, the list of businesses that opted in, there were, there were clearly some there that you thought would sell out immediately and and some others maybe sort of left with with less or nothing, but it was a really good spread across, um. I mean, a lot of hair salons, um, you know, self sole proprietor type places that are completely shut down right now. A lot of people um supported those folks. Um, as well as some of the other businesses that are still open, but are are basically, you know, operating with one leg and one arm right now. Um, so it was just, it it's great, the the primary objective of this whole program was to put money into the small businesses' hands right now to help them out. Um, if you base it completely on those measures, it was an enormous success and could be even uh bigger if we were to appropriate more funds. Um, secondly, you wanted to get the economy going by having, uh, by getting people out there, buying these certificates and then hopefully turning around and spending that money locally, um, in the next months when we, we're really gonna need our help and and we did that as well. You know, like Gary said, there were a few bumps in the road, was it a flawless program? Absolutely not. Um, if we could uh, like a Groundhog Day it and start, you know, again, we, there might be some things that we would tweak. If we ever uh are fortunate enough to be able to do a program like this again, I would certainly uh, myself and Sharon would would maybe change things up a bit to make it more organized, but um, based on how quickly this came about and we rolled it out there. Again, I just, it was a huge success and I think I, once, once these uh, these checks to these local businesses get handed out, you're I think you're gonna see some happy business owners here in town, uh, and and again, the uh, the thank people in Madawaska and the surrounding communities for the support they they poured in, it was great, it really was.
I'm gonna add, I'm gonna add in to that, can't forget that there were some sponsors that put some money into this as well. We had some individuals and sponsors who put about collectively nine hundred fifty dollars uh towards the town's uh installment, first installment, if you will. Um, and it was nice to see, I took orders by phone for for quite a while. And uh, the orders that I saw, I think people were making conscious decisions to buy a little bit, they had a four limit quota. And uh, a a lot of people were spreading that out, you know, they were just making sure every, every business that they uh, was getting a little bit and I didn't, I don't think I took one transaction where it was just at one spot. Uh, it was all spread out and it was nice to see that. Uh, just to give you an idea, uh, so our ten thousand dollars um put into this, uh, leveraged a thousand dollars of sponsors. Um, so our eleven thousand dollar pot of money uh became a twenty two thousand dollar stimulus for our lo- our local businesses. Um, if we put in for the fifteen, uh, to to basically fund the rest of these certificates. Uh, that would mean a twenty five thousand dollar contribution, uh, and a fifty thousand dollar stimulus effort uh for our businesses in town.
I have a quick question if I can.
Sure.
Um, you say you have a uh, a standing list right now. Uh, when was the uh, the last uh people on that standing list, when was that uh reservation put in? In other words, in other words, from what I heard, from what I heard, uh, most, all the certificates were sold before eight o'clock that morning, is that true?
Uh, I think it was, it was probably, it was somewhere between eight and nine o'clock in the morning, I don't remember the exact time, but yeah, I mean, it was super early.
No, my my concern is, uh, thi- this doesn't only help the business people, but it's also for the public to take advantage of. And I, I feel that might be a sector of our public that uh did not have the chance to take advantage of it because the program was open that uh midnight. And uh, of course, by computer, which some of us are good at and some of us are not, took advantage of uh uh, all the midnight hours to get this, so my my concern is that everybody has a chance a fair chance to to buy some of these certificates. And on the other, and on my other question is, I don't think I've ever seen uh a list of the businesses involved uh advertised anyways. And if I did, I think I seen a partial list, but there was a lot of businesses that were not included.
Yep, the uh, well, there was, there was a, uh, all the businesses were, um we were com- we advertised a week prior, uh, for the businesses to opt in, the opt-in period ended last Saturday. Um, so Sharon compiled all that information and uh, Sunday, she had it on her chamber website. Um, we posted it on our website on Sunday as well, uh, we blasted it out on uh the chamber Facebook page. Um, we did our best to get it out there for Monday morning, so that that people had the list in front of them. Um, the businesses that didn't take part either didn't respond uh or decided not to opt in. Uh, and again, Dave, to to your point with the um, the starting at midnight, uh, that, that was one of the hiccups for sure. And uh, like I said, it was not a flawlessly run program, I I'm not, I'll be the first one to say that. But again, the purpose of the program was to put money into the hands of small business owners right now. If you wanna base it off of that, it was a giant success because there was, there is gonna be a lot of money doled out to our local business owners. Um, if I, if we could roll this out and do it all over again, yeah, we might have been, we we probably would have narrowed down the timeframe or or exactly how to do it. Some of those things, uh, it wasn't perfect, but um, you know, I knew it was gonna be busy, I was not expecting the craziness that happens. Uh, you know, starting at eight o'clock in the morning, it was, it was pretty nuts.
Nice thing, um, Dave, just to your point, a lot of the businesses that were involved uh shared that list as well. I kept seeing it, you know, throughout the day. Um, and that, you know, the midnight thing and the cutoff, I think, you know, like he said, there's no way it could have been anticipated, I guess maybe we should have seen this coming, but um, I originally sent in an email only around, I don't know, maybe nine o'clock. And I said, you know, I'll buy four, cause I thought, I thought we would have some left for a couple of days and that I would be actually helping a business, so I thought I'm gonna, I'll buy some. Um, I since, you know, taken that back because I realized like, I don't need to, there's I I think you guys got what, three hundred emails and phone calls within two hours or um something like that and and we had that one phone line, which we, you know, we didn't anticipate uh that kind of busyness, I guess, and it it is sad that people couldn't get through that really wanted to. Um, you know, it's a learning experience and if if we ever do something like this again, I guess we'll have to you know, set up multiple phone lines and just do things a whole lot differently.
Right, we we can
That we had this problem.
We can take, yeah, we, it's it's a great problem to have, we we can, I and I I completely understand uh that side of it, but um, we can sit here all day and and fight over the details, but the fact of the matter is, the the objective of the program was to put money in small business owners' hands and object, uh, we completed that objective uh with flying colors. Unless, I I thought for sure, I, you know, Lori, you're saying days, I was thinking it would be a couple of weeks until we would sell all of these. Like that, I guess that's how naive I was going into it. Um, but I I I was not prepared for how uh quickly But I, I, I was not prepared for how uh quickly that all transpired, but it was amazing. It was, it was awesome to be a part of and uh I know we left people out and and it's, it's sad that there are people that really wanted some that couldn't get that, but at the same time, nobody lost any money in this deal. Uh you know, we did our best. We were, we weren't cherry picking. We were taking as many phone calls and uh and envelopes out of the drop box and emails and in the, the, the best, the most orderly way possible. Um so, you know, again, it wasn't perfect, but man, oh man, did it uh did what it was supposed to do.
But if we, if we decide to put more money into it, those people that you say lost out now have a chance to get some certificates.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I think the fairest way, because we, everything we did was timestamped. Every phone call we took, we wrote a time to it. Every email that we got obviously has a timestamp in it. You know, I would say if we're gonna appropriate anything, we would start from the first person that wasn't able to get one and work our way down the list in in uh in chronological order.
Yeah, asking if they still wanna buy some and.
Right, and 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 the cool thing about it is if we appropriate more money, again, on the guidelines, we had a um a sixty for each business. Because of the way it was so spread out, none of the businesses maxed out in this first set. I anticipate any future appropriation, we will max them out. Um which I think is a good thing, because then as we work down the list, if somebody wanted a gift certificate to a business that is maxed out, they may choose to go a different route and support another small business. Um so I really think we could spread some wealth here and uh and it would and again, no, no small business is gonna get rich off this. We're not talking, nobody's getting a check for twenty grand, but it's gonna be, hopefully, if we can spread that out and get, you know, twenty plus businesses a little bit to help with some of the operating costs right now and and just help uh help with that burden that everyone's dealing with right now uh with the, the loss of, of business due to the, the pandemic. That would be great. So I mean, I, I wholeheartedly believe in this program. Again, it wasn't perfect. Saying it was, but um it, it, we completed the mission and it'd be great if if uh there could be some more funds thrown at it. To help some more businesses and 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 um, you know, make uh make some more people happy with some uh gift certificates.
Yeah, hey, board members, uh Lori, Dave and and Doug, uh you, do you have any inclination to go put some more money in there from U-DAG? Yeah, you know.
Go ahead, Doug.
No, no, Lori, go ahead.
Well, okay, so I have a concern about the balance of the U-DAG, obviously. Um I know there are some loans outstanding and people are paying those back, so the U-DAG balance will go back up. I have that concern, but overwhelmingly, I feel that that U-DAG has been used over the years to help businesses start up. And this is, and I'm sure it's not the first time, but this is the first time that I know about that it's been able to be used for like an existing this, a bunch of businesses, I guess, all at the same time. So um having said that, I'd like to see us for sure fund the five hundred and sixty nine certificates that there's a list for, which is a little under fifteen thousand dollars. Um and and to be honest, I wouldn't mind saying, let's do another two hundred certificates and make it an even twenty thousand. And then the difference, I think it's seven seventy five and that would go to the chamber. But I don't know, if twenty is too much for you guys, that's fine. I, I really wanna, I lean toward the side of, of, I really wanna do this.
Hey Doug?
Yep. Yeah, you know, I mean, uh Lori just, just tackled half of uh the issue that I had there, but but you know, not, not every community has uh um this program, this U-DAG program, and and I think it's, it's, it's it's a nice um, it's a nice asset for this town to have and and I am concerned a little bit about how it gets funded, you know? I mean, these particular dollars that we're working on are not dollars that are gonna find their way back. You know, so, so um um I'm concerned that, that we um make sure that this U-DAG program keeps running and how do we, how does it normally get funded?
So the U-DAG program is a revolving loan from, from a decades old revolving loan fund. Came from the state or the federal government and I believe it was a program with the paper mill. With some lending and the town was, was the administrator of the fund and payments were made back to the town, U-DAG fund. That, so money that came in from state or federal government um way back when in a revolving loan fund was paid back to the town in their revolving loan fund for future lending purposes. So the town of Madawaska has for many, many, for decades now, had this revolving loan fund. Yes, it has, I don't have the exact numbers for you, but it, it are, it's capitalized a lot less than it was back in the day. We have made a lot of loans over the years and and a lot of loans have been paid back. And there have loans that have not been paid back. We've also done marketing.
So it's, so it's probably been depleting slowly here for, 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 for many years.
I mean, there's been a gradual decline of it, yes. It, it does earn interest, obviously, so that helps to, but it, it, at some point in time you know these kinds of programs cease to exist, okay? So uh depending on the borrowing and the losses that we may incur, you know, bankruptcies or whatnot. So um I, I personally think it's a good use of, of money. We are helping businesses out. I wanna say uh that before you guys get ready to, to make motions, uh I would like to add a couple of comments that you know we wanted to help the businesses, we wanted to do something quick and and we definitely, like Keith said, we mission accomplished that one. And the other thing we wanted to do is, is help the chamber out, too. And we thought this would be a great opportunity for the chamber to be a more, you know, chambers are struggling everywhere. Uh funds are, are, are short for operating and opportunities are, are rare. And so uh we thought this would be a great opportunity for the chamber to uh sho- showcase their, what they have. And so, you know, what ended up happening is, is though obviously because of COVID nineteen, there wasn't any face-to-face transactions, but an enormous amount of traffic that came in through the chamber that usually is not the case. And so already, you know, and then I don't wanna speak for the chamber. But already, you know, we think we figured out a, a great program for the chamber to continue on. It could be self-funded uh by chamber members uh moving forward. And so we may, we may have stumbled onto something. I hope that uh would be an exciting thing for the chamber to have. It would bring a lot of people through their doors when eventually people can come back through the doors. That will help uh local businesses to uh you know, to, to generate business and interest. And so uh it's very exciting, I find, and uh
You know, so many, uh so many people, Gary, don't, don't realize or understand just what the chamber does and so they, they go unnoticed for, 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 for many people out there, for many, um many, uh many of us, but, but and and I think this is a, a great opportunity for the chamber to really um shine here, but, but I guess really my question was are you concerned about funding the U-DAG program uh directly from the town? Are we gonna be concerned about that at any point or you're just gonna let this dwindle away or?
You know, I'd have to do some research on that, Doug. I don't know that if towns have ever, there are other towns that have these type of funds, other, some of the larger communities, if you will. I don't know if there's ever been appropriations made to the U-DAG program per se, to the revolving loan fund. I would have to do some research on that. I mean, it's an interesting thing. You'd certainly wanna be able to keep the U-DAG program alive. But you know, those old federal programs, uh they don't exist anymore to fund these things. Uh and so um I will certainly look into it if that's something that the towns, the board and the townspeople would wanna consider. Uh I can look into the legalities of it for sure.
Well, I mean, you can see where, you can see where, um you know, in, in certain situations or circumstances, you have that, you have that door that you can, you can open and, and work with and, and and, and not have to run to the townspeople for money, you know? So I, I mean, I, I, I think it's a great program, whether we call it a U-DAG or whether we call it something different. I, I think it could be really helpful to, to our community in, in, in many different ways.
Doug, would you support, would you support uh Lori's thoughts?
I have, I have no objections. I, 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 I believe that we still have um somewhat forty some odd thousand left in the, in the account there. Forty three thousand, I think, is what we were discussing. We're talking probably what, about twenty thousand, the way Lori was talking and and, and I would be in agreement with that. I mean, I, I see no better way to spend that money.
Yeah, let me, let me get Dave uh to, to give us his perspective also before we go. Okay, before, before we even started this, this discussion, my uh, my idea was that the forty thousand dollars that we put towards small businesses so that they can loan um has not uh received much of a uh in- interest. And uh I was thinking that we could take twenty from that forty and, and fifteen or twenty from that forty and slide it over to this program. And therefore it wouldn't be uh uh digging into the U-DAG fund so much. So that's my feeling.
The on- the only thing, uh Dave, is that we've advertised a microloan of the forty, forty microloans available. We've advertised it, board has acted on it. So, you know, I, I would, I would hate to find ourselves in a, in a position where somebody comes in with a loan application number twenty one, right? And, and sorry, you know, we kind of changed our mind on that. Keep in mind, too, that I expect that um whatever we, we give out for microloans we're probably gonna get a, a, a good chunk of that back in a short amount of time. It's a short, it's an eighteen month loan. So that money's gonna come back into our coffers. There may be a few defaults along the way. We don't know. But uh you know, we have to make an assumption that when we, we give out, we put out these microloans that the borrower is going to pay back.
Yeah, and at the same time, you got forty, the ability to give out forty microloans, but it's only thirty. I take advantage of it, you, you, you're still gonna have the ten thousand dollars that you're not gonna give out at the end of ninety days. Exactly.
Gary, do we uh, do we have a, 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 a date again on these microloans so that they have to be applied for?
Yeah, I can't remember the date. I'm so bad with remembering dates, but we've been ninety days from its inception.
I believe it's.
I think it's June thirty.
That's correct, Dave. That's correct.
Dave, uh we did advertise for two weeks uh in the local paper for the microloan program. And I know Keith, he did a bit with uh with WAGM today, so there's gonna be some more coverage of that and I expect once there's a little more awareness out there and word gets out that we're going to see more uh more applications.
Yeah, okay. Good. Well, um Lori, do you wanna continue and make a motion?
Okay, I guess uh I'll make a motion. I, I have another question, though. Hold on.
Oh, go ahead.
Slips my mind. Is there, do you guys think there could be an opportunity? Um I, I'm not gonna name the particular business, but I, I know of one in particular that um thought they had to be completely closed to be able to jump on this list. Um do you think that it would be wise to say, you know, if there's a business or two that didn't get on cuz either they missed the memo or didn't understand that we could add them at this point if we're gonna, you know, start over?
I, I would be opposed to that, but we have all these orders that have, people have already said, it told us what they want. You know, I want two of these and I want two of those or three of these and one of those, so we're gonna have to go back and re-ask all the people who, who given their pre-orders if they would wanna change their order because one or two more businesses would, would come in. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but it would, it would be some work involved uh in it for sure.
What if we said, um so the people that are, um you had five sixty nine, the people that are already on the waiting list, we'll leave it alone and then we take, um you know, let's say we vote to do another two hundred certificates, we consider that maybe a new round of this program and let those people jump on for those two hundred? Um is that not fair to the other people that are already on? I don't know. I just, I don't want anybody left out. And it sounds like um maybe somebody didn't quite understand cuz he's not closed, but um you know, his business has certainly been hit. But you, you guys, Doug, any?
You know, I, I mean, I, 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 you know, this is a program that, that, that is designed to try to help everybody and so I, I'm open, you know, I would open the door to that thought. Um but not being directly involved, I would wanna try to get Keith's comments here about the, the thought. I mean, uh you know, it, it really, it really sounds good to me. I mean, they it, this is a win-win situation for everybody, so how, how can we accommodate this business or businesses that, that were that were um weren't really sure if they could get in this program? I mean, it the more that we, the more that we attract and the more that we get company, you know, our businesses to, to, to be in this program, the better for all of us. And so Keith, what do you think?
Yeah, um you know, I, I agree. Uh you know, we, we, there was no, there was no mention in the guidelines that you had to be completely closed. We advertised those guidelines as best as we could. Uh we were on the radio for a week. We were in the paper. We uh you know, we did as, I, I feel like we did as much as we could in that short time to get businesses to understand that they had to call us and opt in. I wouldn't be opposed to letting somebody in if they were to call the chamber or myself and request that. Do I wanna change all my current advertising to add a couple of names to it? Uh no, I don't. You know, I, I, but if, if they wanted to add themselves and, and market the program on their Facebook page or their website and say, hey, I'm available as well, then that's, that's okay, I guess. Uh I'm, I'm trying to be fair. But also trying not to, to reinvent the wheel here and have to redo redo everything that's already been put together. Uh again, this is all happening in, in short time, but we did advertise it. It, it's not like this was some secret that we were, we were hiding from everybody. And the reason, and just to go a little bit further, the reason why we held an opt-in period to begin with was that we didn't wanna take the chance that we would forget somebody. Um so for me and between me and Sharon and, and who, and putting this together and coming up with business names, we certainly didn't wanna say, okay, here they all are and then have two or three the day of the program say, well, you didn't, you forgot about me. You know what I mean? Like we, we based it off of the, the business listing we have at the town office, uh and we cross-reference that with um Sharon's chamber members. And then we went through, you know, just going through the phone book, going through, uh driving through town, just trying to make sure that we didn't leave anybody out. And so we ultimately made a decision, you know what? Let's advertise it like crazy and let's get the businesses to opt into this. So that way, we don't miss anybody. But.
Did you, Keith, did you send uh like a, an email or a, a, to all the businesses that you could think of that this program was happening?
Yeah, we had, we, we came up.
So even though they were open, if they were open, you made contact with them?
Well, I mean, not, I wouldn't say we made contact with everyone. Sharon sent out uh emails to her members, chamber members. You know, we reached out, but again, we advertised a full week before that. So I mean, my voice was on the radio. We were on our, our website, the chamber website. Um the Facebook page, we were in the paper. That, you know, I have a hard time believing anybody just didn't know about it. Uh a, a, and you know, I, we did everything we could aside from you know, running up and down Main Street with a sign.
So Keith, that wasn't, it wasn't in any way a judgment on, on the advertising and to be clear, there wasn't a complaint from the business. I think it's more of a um that he probably held back thinking, you know, this is for certain people that are um, you know, struggling to a certain point. And then when he saw the list, he said, oh, you know, I really could have done this.
Right.
You know, there wasn't a complaint.
Oh, yeah.
Judgment. I'm just saying, what if, you know, someone decides, hey, if you're gonna do another round of this, can I jump on?
Yeah.
That was, you know.
Yeah, no, no, and I, I agree. And, and listen, I, like I'm saying, yes, I, the answer to that, I would say, and I'll have to talk to Sharon, but I mean, I think Sharon would feel the same way. I would be perfectly okay with that. Uh and, and we could, you know, we could definitely throw it on. Uh we have a list on our websites right now. We can, we can just add a, a name to it and throw it on and give people the option.
So you would only open that up, though, Keith, to, to, you, you wouldn't open up the new, these new uh potential businesses to all of the folks on your waitlist? We would only look at doing this with the new certificates that we're going to sell?
I mean, I guess we could go either way with it. Um because here's what's gonna happen, you know, again, uh we have a, a waiting list of people who have already told us where they wanna go, but this additional funding, we're definitely gonna max out, cuz in our guidelines, we did have a sixty gift certificate max for each business. So that the max that they could get um is sixty certificates, which is three thousand dollars. And our purpose behind that was to spread it out to make sure that as many businesses can get something as possible. So as we work through this list, there may be people that had two of the two of the four gift certificates they wanted, that those people are going to be sold out. They'll then have to make a decision whether they want to choose a different business or only purchase two gift certificates. You know what I mean? If we wanted to throw a couple of names, other names in the mix, I, like I said, I'm okay with that. You know, and, and we can, we can adjust the list and we can let them know who's available, if, if it's certain ones are maxed out.
Okay, sounds like it's just a logistic thing that has to get, get, you know, thought out, discussed and put together. Let's go back and say, how much money do we want to throw back into this? Let, let's come up with a number. Then Lori had suggested what, a while ago, I think you had thrown out twenty thousand dollars, Lori?
Yes. If we do twenty, if we do twenty, we would cover the five sixty-nine that are outstanding. We could do an extra two hundred and I, if my math is right, we could leave seven seventy-five to the chamber for the additional admin fee.
Okay, I like that. You want to make that in, in the form of a motion?
So I make a motion that we add twenty thousand dollars to the business boost program, an extra two hundred certificates.
Okay. Is there a second to Lori's motion?
I'll second it.
David? That? Any other discussion? All in favor? I, 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 okay, that's Carrie. Thank you folks on that.
Hey, Don, can I just, can I, can I throw one thing in?
Yep.
Uh, just real quick, I just want to, just, I, I know Gary did it already, but I just want to give a, a huge shout out to Sharon at the Chamber. I, I can't wait to talk to her tomorrow. She's going to be excited about this as well. But Sharon has done a phenomenal job administering this. It's been great working with her and developing that relationship. We know we're going to be working together a lot here moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure that I get it out there that I'm extremely, I'm just happy that I got a chance to work with her and she did a phenomenal job in this program.
Excellent. Thank you, Sharon. Gary, do you have anything else?
That's all we have.
Hey, I think Dave, we're a minute beyond what you wanted. So if you want to make a motion to adjourn, I'll entertain it. Are we scheduled doing another meeting before we do that?
Did you do a roll call on your, on your motions? You did?
Yeah, I believe we did, yeah. Yes, we did. We did, we did. Do you have a, a need to have another meeting soon, Gary?
No, not right now.
Let's, Dave, if it's okay, let's wait and see what type of business comes up and then we can call a meeting, advertise it properly and do what we got to do. Okay, that's fine.
So guys, before you, before we adjourn, I think what we're going to do, our next meetings are going to be a little more typical and nor, and regular, if you want to call it, but as far as the agenda is concerned. What I'd like to do, because public participation is very limited. I think what we're going to do in our next agenda that we post is that we're going to have public participation, an opportunity for people to email. They'll see the agenda and if they have any questions related to the agenda or any other concerns that they would like heard by the board, what we could do is on the agenda, say, public comment period for public participation. And so we can get all of those in writing in advance of the meeting. And those public comments can be read out loud by any one of us and addressed by you guys, if that makes sense.
Good idea.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I, I like that. Yeah, I like that. Okay, so all in favor to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I need a second. Okay, say goodbye Lori, all in favor?
I.
I.
Gary, thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Jason.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.